I'm gonna call together the meeting, the concurrent regular meetings of the Sonoma City Council. And the Sonoma City Council is a successor agency to the Dissolve Sonoma Community Development Agency. So, let's go ahead and have our pledge of allegiance led by Terry Lee.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, our most esteemed veteran here. We'll go ahead and do roll call and...
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Hundley?
Here.
Councilmember Cook?
Here.
Councilmember Aggermonte?
Here.
Mayor Gallion?
Present. We'll go ahead and move on to comments from the public. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. It is recommended that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. Under state law, matters represented or presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the city council at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up for council consideration. Upon being acknowledged by the mayor, please step to the podium and speak into the microphone. Begin by stating and spelling your name and address.
Hello, council, I am Cecilia Ponison, P as in Paul, O-N-I-C-S-A-N, and I live on Fran Street here in Sonoma. I attended the Fourth of July Parade, and looking around this room, I think I was the only one not in the parade. It was terrific, as usual. But while I was amongst all these people, there were several things that people were talking about, and one was the restroom in the plaza. And when I told them that it was one of the goals of the city council to enhance the restrooms, I don't know how much you planned to do, but they were going to be made better. No one believed me, they didn't know what I was talking about, and I referred them to your goals. And then they said, "What are you talking about? Apparently, no one knows about your goals." Now, I attended that meeting. You put in many long hours, four pages of this, working on your goals for the city. And I have to tell you, so many in the city don't know a thing about them. So I'm wondering if you can find a way to make them public to the residents. They really need to know what you all worked on and what you're planning to do. I'll start with a quote that I picked up from the Index Tribune. "One significant topic that was a central theme was the need to account for and remain focused on the city's effort toward meeting our Climate 2020 Action Plan target goals." This was said by city manager Carol Gievenato when she introduced all of this work on June 6th. I was only able to stay for two hours and forty-five minutes, but it's my understanding your meeting went on for almost five and a half hours, something like that. So a couple of things that I wanted to point out to people if they're watching, and also that you might tell people about, is that you work to preserve, promote, and celebrate the unique characteristics of Sonoma. You encourage the incorporation of our history into city, community, and business identities. Okay, I have to skip ahead because I have to get to the part where you want to focus, expand focus on elements of the Climate 2020 Plan targets and lead by example with the Sonoma community. You want to encourage more electric vehicles and promote opportunities to expand the installation of electric vehicle charging stations at businesses, shopping centers, lodging establishments, including eligibility for funding under a business loan program. No one knows anything about this. But I also wanted to tell you, I found something out about batteries. There is a company called Battery Recyclers of America. So never fear batteries. They have made battery recycling easy. They recycle batteries in all fifty states, and they do every kind of battery. They recycle lead, acid, lithium, lithium ion, and car batteries. They will come to your city and have a collection day of batteries. And I want you to know, according to this company, which is the largest in America, over ninety percent of all batteries purchased. This is a lithium ion battery, and it runs most of my yard equipment. I can recycle this battery, and I'm never gonna pollute the air. And I will be first in line to help you establish and proceed forward with your Climate 2020 Plan.
Thank you very much, Cece. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening, city council. My name is Terry Lee, L-E-E-N. I live on seven six zero Ernest Drive. I'm pleased to announce that we're starting a federally chartered, another veterans post in Sonoma. I am the commander-elect. We have ten charter members. It's American Veterans, or for short, AMVets. And we're looking forward to working with the city council and for veterans affairs. This no way changes what I have been doing in the past. I am still the Veterans Building Advisory Committee member. So if you have any questions about the Sonoma Veterans Building, please direct them my way. Just to let you know, I also am the chairperson of that committee, excuse me. So I'm here to help with the city council in improving the usage of the veterans building as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, seeing no one else coming to the podium, we're gonna go ahead and close public comment and move on to meeting dedications. Are there any meeting dedications? All right, we'll move on to our consent calendar, agenda order for city council. All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be acted upon. Oh, well geez, now that's really dismissing someone who's sitting here in at least a ten-minute presentation. So let's go ahead and back up a little bit and go back to presentations, for which we have presentations and update on the stormwater program activities. And Chris, you're gonna go ahead and take the lead.
Thank you, mayor. My name is Chris, I'm the Stormwater Compliance Specialist for the city of Sonoma. It's been about a year since I last presented an update on what the stormwater program management, you know, looks like. So tonight, I'll take some time to go over what we've done in the last year. Before I get into that, I'll do a little bit of overview on what the regulatory environment looks like for stormwater. So I'll just get into it. Stormwater management is couched within the Public Works Department. We own, operate, and maintain all of the storm drain inlets, underground pipes, and the outfalls that collect and gather stormwater when it rains and collect it and carry it to the nearest creek. We've got three creeks that run through town, Nathanson Friar and Sonoma Creeks. Our system, you know, it gathers water very effectively, and it also gathers pollutants very effectively. And there's no treatment. It carries everything it picks up directly to the nearest creek. It's not like the sanitary sewer, which is a separate system, which takes all of the water from our sinks and toilets and showers and takes it to the treatment plant on A Street East. So the best and most effective form of treatment or preventing pollutants from reaching the creeks, which is the big objective of our stormwater program, is to prevent them from reaching the storm drain system in the first place. So we take a lot of actions to prevent anything from getting into the storm drain system and take a look at the categories that those fit into. Just by way of introducing the topic, stormwater is really just the last of a broad category of pollutant sources that have come under federal regulation over the past century. The first two were sewage and industrial processed water. Sewage disposal practices were by far the most consequential and easy to tame and earliest to identify as a pollutant category. During the eighteenth, nineteenth centuries, massive pandemics of spreadable disease were caused by improper sewage disposal practices. By about the twentieth century, industrial categories were recognized as another major pollutant source in the nation's waters and one that couldn't be treated. Most of the issues related to public health that were caused by sewage disposal could be treated not by fixing the disposal issue, but by treating the drinking water before it was consumed. Industrial processes were an entirely different category because they were so much harder to remove from water. By about the nineteen sixties, we'd seen two world wars worth of industrialization and a major post-war economic boom in the fifties that kind of led to an apex in the decade of nineteen sixties, when we saw the Cuyahoga River Fire, which was a major public spectacle when a river caught fire. We also saw the Santa Barbara Oil Spill in the same decade, the largest of its kind to date at the time. And by nineteen seventy-two, Congress acted, not just to enact water quality protection laws like the Clean Water Act, but host environmental protections. And what the Clean Water Act did was it provided federal funding for new treatment plants to the tune of about fifty-seven billion dollars. That addressed some more sewage disposal issues. It also made it illegal to discharge industrial waste to the nation's waters. It was kind of a command and control law. It required the best available technology to be used to treat industrial wastewater before they were discharged, which meant it was a moving target. So as new technologies became available, industries would be required to use them. But over the years, following passage of the law, it became apparent that these rather tractable point sources were not the only pollutant sources that were affecting the nation's waters. And so in nineteen eighty-seven, the Clean Water Act was amended, and new requirements were put in place for municipalities to control stormwater, which has historically not been a point source. But what stormwater conveying systems do, much like the one that the city of Sonoma operates, is collect runoff water from a large area and concentrate it into a point source, which is an outfall to a body of surface waters. So the nineteen eighty-seven amendments were phased. The first phase only applied to very large cities with over a hundred thousand residents. But the second phase included cities with ten thousand or more residents, and that's how Sonoma became a federally regulated stormwater discharger. We first began permit implementation in two thousand and three. The permit requirements at the time were relatively lax. They weren't very prescriptive. They allowed the city to pick from a menu of best management practices and implement what worked best for us. But following some litigation by the National Resources Defense Council, the state was required to update our permit program and make it considerably more restrictive. And that update went into effect in two thousand and thirteen. So in two thousand and thirteen, the city responded to this new permit by creating a full-time position of Stormwater Compliance Specialist. And in the three years since, we have done quite a bit to get our program up and running and compliant. We've got a bit of a fire lit under us to comply with this permit because the EPA and the Regional Water Quality Board are fully authorized to penalize us for not complying. And the Clean Water Act also authorizes citizens to bring suit against both the violator of any permit or the enforcement agency. So the enforcement agency, being the Regional Water Quality Control Board, certainly has the spurs to it, so to speak, to monitor and pursue violations. So, within that context, the city has identified four major pollutant categories that we wanted to act upon and were required to act upon. The first is pesticides. One of the ways we've done this is by educating our target audience, which is folks using pesticides in their home gardens and around their houses. We are working with a regional group to provide education at the only pesticide retailer in Sonoma, that's Friedman Brothers. We've also adopted and implemented an integrated pest management policy. This was passed in two thousand and fourteen. We capped our glyphosate use in two thousand and one and reiterated that cap in two thousand and fourteen at eighteen gallons. In the period since, we've kept records of our glyphosate use, and we've actually been able to bring our average over those twelve years down to less than four gallons a year. So we've been staying well below our threshold on that. We've also partnered with the EPA and the Sonoma Ecology Center and the county of Sonoma to do some receiving water monitoring to detect pesticides and identify sources so that we can abate them. Another category we'll work on is pathogens. Much like pesticides, we want to educate the target audience, so we use signage with educational messages at hotspots. We try and target pet waste. When it doesn't get cleaned up and it rains, it tends to wash into the storm drains. So that's a priority pollutant that we're trying to address. Through the same program that we'll be monitoring pesticides for, we're gonna be doing some receiving waters monitoring to detect failing septic systems so that those can be abated. This year, we trained all of our maintenance workers and front desk staff to optimize our response to sanitary sewer overflows. The sanitary sewer is operated by the Sonoma County Water Agency, but that doesn't mean that they're the first people to respond to overflows when they happen in the city of Sonoma. Usually, the city gets called first. And while we direct our calls to the water agency, our staff now have training so that they can do, basically, improve the water agency's response time and also potentially offset some of the impacts from overflows from their systems that might run into our storm drain system. Third category, sediment. Sediment ends up in the storm drain system as a result of erosion, which happens anytime you have water flowing over exposed soils. Our most common type of exposed soil in the city is construction sites. So since two thousand and fifteen, we've required all construction site operators to prepare an erosion and sediment control plan and provide best management practices on site to prevent erosion. We've also worked to receive some federal funding to assess and prioritize the outfalls and covert outfalls in the city for erosion potential. And the last category is trash. We've already participated in a pilot program to put about thirty trash screening devices in the storm drain inlets in the city. These capture all of the trash that's five millimeters in diameter or larger and prevent it from getting into the storm drain system and creeks. In the coming years, we'll be working to identify all of the high trash generation areas in the city. And in the next ten years, we'll be required to reach a hundred percent trash capture from those areas. So there will be virtually no trash in our waterways come two thousand and twenty-six. We also directly abate trash. The last year saw three major homeless encampment cleanups by Public Works. Altogether, we took about fifty-five hundred pounds of trash out of camps that were along the creeks or in creek site settings. And overall, one of the final things that we do to address these categories of pollutants as well as others is reduce the total volume of runoff. So we do this because as cities develop, new rooftops, new buildings, new parking lots, streets are put in, and all of those surfaces are impervious to rainwater. So they prevent any rainwater from infiltrating into the ground, and they increase the amount of runoff that's going to the storm drain system. So since two thousand and fifteen, we've required any new development that is creating or replacing twenty-five hundred square feet or more of these impervious areas to implement best management practices before they can obtain a building permit. So some of these best management practices that new development is responsible for could take the shape of porous pavers, bioinfiltration basins, rain gardens, rain barrels, any other rainwater capture and reuse system, just to name a few. There's a very wide selection of best management practices that development can choose from. Nonetheless, they all offset the impacts of new impervious areas. And last but not least, we've partnered with the water agency to seek some grant funding to prepare a stormwater resources plan. We'll be conducting some studies to find every opportunity we can to capture and reuse stormwater from the city. And once we have our stormwater resources plan in place, we'll be able to pursue additional federal funding and state funding through Prop One, primarily to actually implement some stormwater capture and reuse projects. That's the end of my presentation. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions of councilmembers? Yes, councilmember Hundley.
I do. What's the biggest sources of trash in our city?
We are currently pursuing a study to assess that. We don't know yet, but we do have a contract through a regional collaboration called BASMA to complete that study in the next year. So we'll know exactly which areas produce the most trash. Off the cuff, I would say that the homeless encampments have been the largest direct source that we know of, just because that's the only source that we have an actual tonnage for. And fifty-five hundred pounds is a pretty large number.
I saw, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay, I'll come back to you.
I saw a, there was a photo of a screen that catches trash. So the water comes through that, I don't know, it looked like maybe twelve to sixteen inch pipe possibly, and it goes into a catch area with screening. So that water goes through the screen into the normal waterway there, is that what it is?
Yeah, that's correct.
Because it was sort of a small picture. So that's what it does, it catches the trash before it goes into the waterway.
Yeah, there is a couple of potential systems. There's front-end capture at the storm drain inlet, which is a retrofit to an existing storm drain inlet. And a turkey one at that because it needs to carry the same hydraulic, it seems it needs to carry the same amount of water, it can't cause flooding. But it is possible, and that's the system that we've piloted so far in the city. There's also end-of-pipe capture, where at the end of the pipe, all of the trash comes in and one giant separator separates the trash from the water before it discharges. So there's a couple approaches.
How many screening areas is that, within that, a lot or?
It could be as many, it could be over three hundred, which is a worst-case scenario. But based on our study that I mentioned earlier, to identify the high trash generation areas, we'll have a minimum of thirty new installations of those and a maximum of three hundred.
So do they have to be monitored?
They do have to be monitored. They need to be cleaned out very regularly.
More so in any part of the year, or it doesn't matter?
They're seasonally affected by leaf matter. So fall is by far the worst time for maintaining them because you're not capturing so much trash, you're just capturing a lot of vegetation.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, my question is styrofoam. Do we have a large percentage of that trash actually being styrofoam?
We don't have data on the composition of trash that's been removed from our storm drain system so far. So we may have that in about a year, but right now, we don't know what percentage, which percentage would be certain types of plastics or styrofoams.
Well, I know recently, it's either San Francisco or Berkeley just passed a very strong ordinance concerning styrofoam. And a lot of times in packing materials, as you get it from Amazon or some of your other online distributors, we're getting not styrofoam, but, you know, other components still, it's the peanuts and whatever. And a lot of people are not careful to make sure that that gets recycled correctly. And those are the things that can be very detrimental because they go ahead and they collect. And I just wanted to make sure that, you know, if it was a matter of, you know, recycling centers or something that we needed to beef up that information, that we had that available as well. So I do feel trash is important because, number one, we have one of the best, I should say, operators in probably the entire county who do more than enough to make sure that trash is recycled and it's correctly disposed of and whatever. So my question is, if it's a matter of more recycling in containers in a public setting or something where it seems to be a collector, then that's the type of information that I would like to have back from this as well.
I think we'll have some of that information, actually. Part of the study will not just look at which areas are generating trash, but we'll be looking for the most cost-effective practices that the city can implement to prevent that trash from reaching a storm drain. And in some instances, our consultant may find that targeted outreach, increased public education, restrictions on certain product uses, or increased recycling facilities may be a more effective or a more cost-effective approach. But at this point, we don't know what the outcomes are going to look like. So we will have an evidence-based approach to tackling this issue in the most cost-effective way possible within the next year.
Well, I know that, I would like to have ears open because I know Santa Rosa is also studying this, you know, right now as well. So I think we can all benefit by our collaboration. Bio-degradable in some products is not a matter of ninety days, but it could be, you know, up to three to five years. So the fact is, where do we go ahead and set our markers so that we can deal with that? And I know that some people are very upset over the fact that they're not able to go to some of the recycling centers that had been set up before because they've been closed. And that's another area that I believe our mayor, Pro Tem, will probably be picking up. And, you know, her watch is waste management. So just, those are key things for me, and obviously, water quality. As we either have more water or less water, you know, how does our quality vary? And then when we deal with chemicals, how does that work out? And how do you effectively monitor that?
Well, we pick our priority pollutants. As I mentioned, we're gonna be monitoring for pathogens and pesticides in our receiving waters. We'll be collecting water from Nathanson Creek and Sonoma Creek, as well as other locations in the watershed because it's a region-wide collaboration with the county and EPA. In general, we're using these to identify sources and correct them, as well as understand broader trends. We can't effectively monitor all receiving waters for all possible pollutants. So what we do is we pick the most consequential ones, and we hope that they serve as indicators of our general program effectiveness. We hope that as one pollutant goes down, most of the others are also going down. We know that in some instances, that isn't necessarily true. Occasionally, the Department of Pesticides' regulation will enact a statewide ban on a pesticide, and the detected quantities of that pesticide in receiving waters will go down statewide. That doesn't mean all of the other pesticides have gone down. Usually, it just means that the industry that was causing the initial discharge has moved on to another pesticide that we aren't monitoring for yet. I'm not saying that necessarily will happen in the future, but it's something that we've seen historically.
Okay, and I guess my last question is, as we come to an area where not just, you know, permitted construction is going on, but sometimes homeowners are doing, you know, work on their particular properties and... work on their particular properties, and we hope that they're checking in with what's permitted and what's not. But do you find that we have an excessive construction or demolition debris that we're not able to handle? Or what's your bead on that one?
It does happen. In maybe a dozen instances in a year that are reported to us. It generally comes by, it comes to the city by way of a citizen complaint through the Building Department. And as the Public Works Inspector for that sort of complaint, we follow a pretty standard abatement procedure to get it cleaned up, which usually just entails communicating with the individual doing construction activities in either an unpermitted way or in a way that does affect receiving waters, what the impacts are and how they can correct them.
Okay, and this would be my means, like, you know, if they've washed down their driveway, which is not a water conservation practice, and all of the dust or construction debris that's in it is going down the street itself and going into a gutter of some sort, and a neighbor calls in and says, "This doesn't look right." And that's what you're investigating, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, that's good. And they would call Public Works if they saw that?
Uh...
Or the building?
We try to get the direct line for my office advertised on the city website, but generally, calls just go to the main desk line. And then we've trained all of our front desk staff to ask all the right questions when they receive a complaint so that they can get me all the information I need to follow up with the complainant and gather more information, or at least be able to find the discharge that the complainant is making a complaint about as expeditiously as possible.
Right, okay. Because the best thing about stormwater is it's preventable, okay? And the incidents, or perhaps the fines or anything that might be cited, is definitely something that is preventable. And that's what you're, you're there for the public to interact with in case they see that this is a possibility.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else have any further questions? I'm gonna go ahead and, just at this point, go ahead and thank you very much for your information to the council. And we'll go ahead and move on past our presentations to the consent calendar and agenda order for the City Council. And all items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be acted upon by a single motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the council, staff, or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. At this time, council may decide to change the order of the agenda. So council members, any items? All right, with that, I'll go out to public. Public wish to comment on anything on the consent calendar? Seeing you all running up here, I'll go ahead and close that portion. And council members, do you motion or actions? Okay, Councilmember Hundley?
I'd like to make a motion to approve all items of the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Hundley, a second by Mayor Pro Tem Agremonte. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the roll call vote.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Hundley?
Aye.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Councilmember Agremonte?
Aye.
Mayor Gallion?
Aye, and with that, we have 5-0 passing of the consent calendar agenda order. I'd like to congratulate Matt Metzler as the alternate commissioner for Community Services and Environment Commission, and thank you, Councilmember Hundley, for your help on that decision. Consent calendar, agenda order, City Council as successor agency. All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine. At this time, council may decide to change the order of the agenda. Do I have anyone wishing to pull this item? Seeing none. Out to the public, anyone wishing to comment? Seeing none. Back to the council for action. Mayor Pro Tem?
I think...
Well, Councilmember Cook?
I'll make a motion to approve item 5A on the consent counter for the successor agency.
And I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Cook, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Agremonte. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Let's go ahead and do roll call.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Hundley?
Aye.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Councilmember Agremonte?
Aye.
Mayor Gallion?
Aye, so with that, we have passed the consent calendar agenda order for the City Council as successor agency, 5-0. We have no public hearing scheduled tonight, and that means that we are moving on to item 7A, discussion, consideration, and possible action to adopt a resolution calling for an election on a proposed ballot measure to continue the existing voter-approved funding of a transactions and use sales tax to fund general city services. And with that, it is our city manager, Carol Givernato.
Thank you, Mayor Gallion, members of the City Council. At your June 27th council meeting, we presented the background on the city's existing local sales tax measure, which is set to expire on June 30th of 2017. This tax adds a half percent local sales tax to fund city services, which is added to the general sales tax on purchases in the city and typically adds approximately 50 cents to every $100 of eligible goods purchased. This additional half percent brings the total sales tax in Sonoma to 8.75 percent, joining the cities of Healsburg, Ronert Park, and Santa Rosa, which are also set at that same rate. The cities of Sebastopol and Cattati have a higher sales tax rate at 9% and 9.25% respectively, while the cities of Petaluma, Windsor, and Cloverdale have a lower sales tax rate at 8.25, although Petaluma has gone out for a sales tax measure previously, which was defeated, and are planning on going back out in November as well. Sonoma's rate is currently right at the middle range of Sonoma County. Overall, our current Measure J, which tonight is the last night that we'll be calling it Measure J, if the council moves forward to put the renewal on the ballot, has provided a stabilizing local economic foundation for the city's provision of public services, and as such, is needed to continue to fortify the city's general fund. While several promises have been made by the state to replace the lost redevelopment funding and housing funds, no movement has been made in this area. As, you know, we've discussed, the former redevelopment funds, which were local property tax funds, were removed by the state back in 2011. While the state extols its bounty of revenues collected, it has not returned any of those revenues lost by the cities. City must continue revenue sources such as our former Measure J that are insulated from state intervention. It's important to note that the original reason that the local tax Measure J was set in place was a basic stopgap measure based on the uncertain promises made by the state to sort out the after-effects of the elimination of redevelopment, none of which have happened. With our current local tax set to expire in June of 2017, the council has considered whether or not to pursue the extension of the tax as a ballot measure on the November ballot. At our last council meeting, under three different options. The first option was to renew the local tax measure with a sunset provision, and considered a five-year provision, a 10-year provision, and a 20-year provision. You also looked at renewing the tax measure in perpetuity, which is basically no stated end date. And thirdly, you looked at not moving forward with the renewal of the local sales tax, which essentially would give advance notice to begin looking at a future general fund expenditure reductions equalling the loss of 2.2 million in revenue. After significant discussion of all three of those options, a majority consensus of the council on a discussion basis looked at the extension of five years as a sunset provision would be the preferred timeframe. And based on your discussion, this option was considered to, number one, coincide with allowing a reportable measurable period during which the city would continue to demonstrate its fiscal responsibility for expenditures of funds. I think that staff and the council has demonstrated that fiscal responsibility to date with our local, the expenditure of our local Measure J funding. And two, this timeframe would mitigate any economic downturn predicted by the state and national economists, which the downturn is anticipated in 2017, 18. Lastly, as we discussed, I did confirm with the State Board of Equalization that should the City Council administratively choose to end the tax early in any year prior to the five-year sunset, you could do so without further voter approval. So the resolution has been prepared to place the renewal of the city's local transaction and use tax, the former Measure J, on the November ballot. Contained within this resolution is a provision that directs the mayor to prepare the ballot argument in favor. That's kind of a standard language provision. The council also has the option to prepare the argument in open session, appoint a council subcommittee, or other additional options as allowed by the election code, and that is open for discussion this evening, and we could change the resolution tonight and still pass that resolution. Also contained in the resolution is a recommended, is recommended ballot measure language, which the voters will be considering. It is contained in the resolution, and it states as follows. To continue funding that cannot be taken by the state for general city services, including preserving the quality of life of Sonoma, and to provide funding for essential services such as police and police, fire and emergency services, street maintenance, affordable housing, parks, and other general community services, shall the city of Sonoma extend the existing voter-approved sales tax of one-half of 1% for the term of five years, with all funds to be spent locally. Extension of the tax will continue to support the city's core services, with affordable housing also added to allow for a more centralized focus to address this issue. This also aligns with your 2016, 17 council goals. So the action this evening to approve, is to approve the resolution, and also to confirm the wording contained in the resolution relative to three aspects that are contained in the resolution. So what we're looking for is to confirm these items prior to approving, if that is your direction. Three items relative to, number one, confirm the period of funding at five years, sunset provision. Number two, to confirm the ballot measure language, which is what I just read to you as stated above. And so we can also, if you wish to make a change to that ballot language, we could do that as well. And number three, to decide who will prepare the ballot argument, whether that remains with the mayor, whether you wish to appoint a council subcommittee, whether you wish to act as a body to prepare that ballot argument, and that would require convening special meeting, or other options as provided by the elections code, which the city attorney can discuss, but it's also stated in the, your agenda packet. So that concludes my staff report. I'm open for questions, and again, I would like to say that I believe that the staff has presented very fiscal responsible management of our sales tax to date. We have managed the funds as we stated that we would in the original Measure J. We will, if this moves forward, we will be educating the taxpayers as to where our Measure J money was spent, and moving forward, be able to show the taxpayers that we are fiscally responsible with the use of all of taxpayers' assets. So that concludes my staff report.
Thank you very much. Councilmembers? Councilmember Edwards?
So Carol, on the ballot argument issue, being that the finance managers sitting here and yourself, and the trust that the council has put in you and the community and the history of that, is there any opportunity with a subcommittee to work with the staff? Is that a possibility to create that argument? Or to write that argument?
The, if the council subcommittee wishes or requests that staff assist, the only way that staff could do that is on a totally voluntary basis, and it would have to be after hours outside of City Hall, and only through use of private computers off-site. And it would just be strictly on a voluntary basis if we choose to do so. You request our assistance, and we choose to assist, and I know personally, I would be more than happy to do that, and I'm sure our finance manager would as well. Not speaking for her, but it would have to be all completely off-site and not during any of our business hours.
And the reason I ask is because you guys are, you know, intimately aware of all the projects that we've spent money on, the turn lanes on Napa Road, et cetera, et cetera, where we might not, you know, especially some of the new members of the council might not have all of the detail of the history, and I think that would be very important. Because I've spoken to actually a couple of business owners this week, and asked me what I think of this based on what was in the IT recently. And there might be a business owner or two that might be interested in helping write that argument as well, so I just wanted to see if that was a possibility. Thank you.
I would certainly be, make myself available at any time, after hours, before or after hours.
Okay. I just had a question also because I'm referencing, I actually pulled Measure J and, you know, the ballot arguments and whatever from before. And I believe the arguments themselves are limited to 300 words or less. So that's a lot of words, it sounds like, in the beginning, but when you try to incorporate what you're doing, you probably go to the highest best purpose. And I remember last time, we had to walk completely off the square, out of the horseshoe and whatever, and have any discussions whatsoever about this. We're very fortunate to have the chamber, and, you know, certainly in one of the conversations, we actually had, you know, quite a few members of our community go ahead and participate on the, on the subcommittees. So I just want to make sure for those that have not gone through this process, how important it is to, it's not spoken of, or no taxpayer dollars are used to promote this particular item. It's all on the outside, just like campaigning. Okay, so I want to clarify that. With that, if there's no other questions, let's go ahead and put it out to the public. And I believe we have a willing constituent here, so let's go for it.
Well, David Iker, Levittown Loma Court, which is outside the city, so I am not a constituent. And though I do support the extension of the sales tax, and I do spend most of my dollars, taxable spending is done within the city. And before last week, when I was looking over all the packet, and I couldn't be here on the last Monday's meeting, I was more inclined to say, "Let's raise the TOT." But seeing that raising the TOT would not bring in enough unless you brought it, you know, probably, I don't know, 25%. I didn't do a calculation, but you know, you can't, just raising it 2% won't do it. Maybe you might have to raise it like 8% to 10% to get the same amount. That said, that I just, when I was just doing some research, I happened along the line to a study that showed the different tax measures that have been put on the ballot, and... to a study that showed the different tax measures that were put on the ballot, and the percentage of them that passed. And interestingly enough, TOT taxes, raising the TOT on ballot measures, passed much more than raising the sales tax. So if something happens and measured, the measure J extension, whatever letter it comes up with, doesn't pass, then maybe the TOT is another option to at least get some of that back. And if you're afraid of raising the TOT too much, just a reminder, even though the Sonoma Tourism Improvement District still has eight more years to go, the City Council has discretion of setting that, the amount. So it could reduce the STID from 2% down to 1%, and then say, take another 2%. So the city would get additional 3%, and only raise the total amount of tax paid by tourists staying in hotels from 10% to 12%. So that's just something to think about in the future. And then property tax was the other one that does, it does not do as well as TOT. And then just one other thing that, in terms of the ballot language and argument for it, that the ballot language was quite long, and almost sounds like it's an argument for the, you know, the measure to begin with. So you have that a little bit, it's in there, you have some of that in there. So in any case, I just want to let you know, I do support the extension, but I wanted to offer my thoughts on, oh, one other thing, and that is, I do have some apprehension on a five-year extension, because the, you know, the voters may expect that after five years, that it's going to go away. And they may be looking through you to say, well, you know, why are you just doing five years if you expect this not to be able to reduce your expenses, or to get the revenue in some other way? If you're not looking for that in the future, well then, they may just decide, well, why just five years, and it really means forever. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. And I just, before you, you have a little information just for city manager and for our attorney to go ahead and just go through some of our steps here. So the first one I would like to hear about is confirming a period of funding for five years. So I think we could make a motion at the end, but I'd just like to see if there's any discussion that we need to have on that particular item, anyone wishing to talk about that? Yes, Councilmember Cook?
Well, I'd just state that doing a straw poll, that I would, I would be okay with the five years, with finding out that the language, that the city council does have the power to withdraw the tax if we see that we don't need it.
And I think I would have to concur with you also, Councilmember Cook, because in finding that information out, when I was reading it in the report for here, it could be ended at any point during that five-year period, which was one of the advantages of having it in perpetuity, that we did not have to go back to the voters to end it as well. So I just, I'd like to state that. Councilmember Hundley?
At the last meeting, I was on the fence between five and 10 years. I ended up voting for five, but after thinking about it, since this is so important, I think five is a lot safer measure, or amount of time to pick anyway, since uncertain economy coming ahead, so I think that people are going to feel more comfortable with five years.
Okay, so we have a consensus that it's five years. Okay. Now we would move on to the, confirm the ballot measure language as stated, and we have the, for those who are following along, it is included on page 27 of the agenda packet in a lined-out box, but for us, we have it on the piece of paper stating to confirm funding, et cetera, et cetera. So council, how do you feel about that? Councilmember Hundley?
I think this is a great list. It's a little bit long, but I think it includes all of the, you know, essential things, and then also our more recent values that we have, so I support it just like it is.
Okay. All right, and Mayor Protam Agravanti?
I agree. You know, I think it really, it is long, but it says what it funds, it's more tangible, rather than we're going to do some studies with this money, or, you know, take a look at clouds and see how they affect the weather, and I think that's really great. The only thing, of course, you know, with my sense of humor, I'm a great fan of books from, you know, historical books, and the word state might be changed to sheriff, I don't know. That's what, sheriff, isn't he the one that used to come in and take all the money? All right, we'll stay with state.
Only in Nottingham. So I like the language, I think it's well done, whoever did it, and it's, I'm ready to roll on it.
All right, and Councilmember Cook?
I also support.
Right. I think, I think it's a little bit of the old, it's some of the new, it's combined to say, especially those words, that cannot be taken by the state. Seeing expressively how you pointed out in your staff report, how all this money was supposed to go back to the state, and then it was going to be coming back to the local governments. I was just reading Western City Magazine, and they talked about, you know, how important it is to protect local control. This, to me, in that statement, makes every voter aware of the fact that this is being directed by your local government, who spends this money. So I'm in favor of that as well. Moving on to number three, and it's decide who will prepare the ballot argument. Councilmembers, ideas? Councilmember Edwards?
I'd like to see us put together a council subcommittee, and I'd be happy to serve on that if the council wishes, and I'd like to work with any volunteers from staff that are, want to do that as well. Thank you.
I believe it's, Jeff, how many councilmembers? Two? Two. Okay. All right, good enough. All right, anyone else on that? Yes?
I also support having it in a subcommittee. I think that would be an efficient way to do it, but also get different perspectives involved, and if needed, I would serve on the committee also, but if someone else really wants to be on it, depends.
Mayor Protam Agravanti?
I'm very comfortable with these two council, these two councilmembers. I mean, as they've volunteered, and I think, I think it makes sense. Thank you.
Okay, and Councilmember Cook?
Yeah, I also would support the council subcommittee, and would be fine with Councilmember Hundley and Councilmember Edwards.
Okay, all right. Boy, do we have further comments or discussions at this point. Okay. I believe we've gone through your list, Carol. All right. Seeing as we have no further discussions on these three points. Yes. Mm-hmm. So we would, in making the resolution, I believe we would go ahead and amend it on the?
On page 28.
Right.
E. We'd say council subcommittee.
Or just name the councilmembers.
All right, so we'd say councilmembers Edwards and Hundley.
Edwards and Hundley. Okay.
Are hereby authorized.
Are hereby authorized.
So we will make that, we will make that change on the original resolution.
And I believe it's up to, how many, how many on this subcommittee besides the council members?
Nobody, they're the only members that can be on this subcommittee.
Okay, so that's.
They can enlist assistance from other people.
Right, but other people can actually sign the argument as well?
Yes, it says what, you need to change then further on that page 28.
Strike that.
Second sentence, you'd say, at councilmembers Edward and Hundley's discretion, the argument may also be signed, et cetera, et cetera.
Right, and is it up to five people that can sign an argument? Only five? Is that correct?
Correct.
So it would be up to three other members?
Three other people.
Three other people.
Or they don't have to sign it at all.
Or they don't have to sign it?
They could have you sign it, and Chair of the Board of the Chamber, and three other people that they thought would be influential in supporting the measure.
Okay, all right, so that, so that's fine, that's all in their purview as the committee itself.
Correct.
Okay. Well, that's good, we all learned something new.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
So how is, how is this reported back to the city council as it moves through its process?
As currently contemplated, it will not be reported back to the council. The first time you'll see the argument is when you get your voter's pamphlet. That's not the way it has to be.
Can we report back as informational on August 15?
Certainly.
We will report back as informational on August 15. It will be after the filing, but it will be informational.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Any further questions before I accept an action on this? All right, let's go forward. Who wishes to make the motion?
I'll do, I'll do it.
Mayor Protam Agravanti?
Well, I'd like to make a motion as we move forward, and am I including the resolution as it's written?
Yeah, or you could read this right here, with the changes.
Okay. Okay, I'm making, I'd like to make a motion to approve a resolution of the city council of the City of Sonoma approving, calling for, giving notice of, and establishing the policies and procedures for an election on a proposed ballot measure to continue the existing voter-approved funding of a transactions and use, in parentheses, sales tax to fund general city services and directing the County of Sonoma to conduct the election of the, on the city's behalf.
And to include?
To include, to confirm a period of time, period of funding at five years, also confirm ballot measure language.
Which is in the resolution.
Which is in the resolution, and to choose, let me see, to decide who will prepare the ballot argument, and we have chosen Subcommittee Councilmembers, Councilmember Gary Edwards, and also Councilmember Rachel Hundley.
Okay. Now we need a second.
Oh, second up.
Okay, and we have Councilmember Hundley as a second. City Attorney, is that appropriate, what we just did as a motion?
Yes, it makes sense.
We covered everything?
Yes, you have.
Okay, good enough. So are there any further questions from councilmembers? Stating none at this point, let's go for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Hundley?
Aye.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Councilmember Agravanti?
Aye.
So with that, we have just passed the resolution, et cetera, et cetera, okay, to go ahead and put on the ballot measure. And my congratulations to our two councilmembers for stepping up and being part of that committee. All right. Let's see, I can get back to my, I'm so excited, we're moving on, okay, to item 7B, which is discussion, consideration, and possible action to approve a resolution setting priorities for filing, a written argument regarding a city measure. And I believe Carol Givinato will be taking this over as our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Gallion, members of the city council. At your June 27 meeting, you adopted a resolution calling for an election placing the issue of banning gas-powered leaf blowers before the voters in November. But prior to approving that resolution, you removed the portion containing the language on the preparation of the written argument of the proposed ordinance on behalf of the city council, and directed that the issue be returned for a separate discussion, and that is what you are, have before you as an action tonight. So you should discuss who should prepare the ballot argument, much like what you just went through on the sales tax measure. And the following options apply to this ballot measure as well. You have the option of the mayor preparing the ballot argument, a council subcommittee, the council as a body, again, would require convening a special meeting, or other options per the elections code, which include a, any individual who is a voter who is eligible to vote on the measure, or a bona fide, bona fide association of citizens, or any combination of voters and associations may file a written argument for or against any city measure. And so this is open for your discussion and direction, and then there is a resolution in the, in your agenda packet that you will need to modify, again, based on your decision
Any questions of staff? I have a question, if we decided against an argument altogether, is that an option?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And then you just wait to see who submits arguments, and then the clerk is governed by the elections code to prioritize and select one argument. And if you do not propose, prepare an argument, and a bona fide association does, and a group of voters also prepares an argument, and a single voter prepares an argument, hypothetically, three arguments are submitted in support of the leaf blower ordinance, then the clerk would choose one of those, and the clerk would be required to choose the one submitted by the bona fide association. That's number one priority.
Okay. Yes, Mayor Protam?
I'd like to ask a question. I know, Carol, we discussed this today, but in the second paragraph that begins, shall Sonoma City Council, and we discussed by permitting the use of electric and battery-powered leaf blowers under specified regulations be adopted. So could you allow, could you expand on that for us?
Yes, you would ask specifically when it says, under special, specified regulations be adopted. You have an ordinance in place, and so this, what that means is, there are regulations in place as to how leaf blowers are to be operated, what the hours are, what the days of the weeks are, that's what it's referring to, is how they would be, how they are operated. So that doesn't change, those are in place.
And that's, I think, we refer to as guidelines, I think.
That's correct, the guidelines in how they are operated, so. So you have all that in place, all this is referring to is banning the use of gas-powered leaf blowers.
Thank you.
And just a question, the ordinance that we actually prepared and passed before the referendum, is that something that the public will be seeing?
Yes, it's attached to the ballot pamphlet materials that you will, that the voters will receive.
So they will be getting everything that the ordinance says, they'll be able to read that as well?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
This language that you see here, sorry to interrupt here, that was referred to by Councilmember Agravanti, this language is mandated by state law, meaning at least the first part and the last part, so that if an ordinance has been passed by the council, that becomes subject to a successful referendum, and the council then decides to place the ordinance on the ballot, which you have, the question that must be posed to the voters is, as you see here, shall Sonoma City Council, ordinance number 01-2120116, banning the use of gas leaf blowers within the city's limits, but permitting the use of electric and battery-powered leaf blowers under specified regulations be adopted? So you sort of, you see it all real fast with one breath, and then the final two words, be adopted, that's the question that is posed to the voters. It's a little strange, because the referendum really is trying to kick the ordinance out, is trying to basically defeat it, but it creates so much confusion in the voter's mind if you have sort of a double negative. And here, the elections code says, we're getting rid of all of that, we're just going to pretend as though it was never adopted, and you're posing to the voters, do you want to adopt it? And so that's how this is presented.
Okay, that's great. Any further questions? Okay, let's go out to public for comment on this particular item. Anyone wishing to comment, please step up.
Hey, David Iker, 1110 Loma Court, and I do have first, some questions on the ballot arguments. And so we know who can submit ballot arguments, and we know the order of precedence, but I have a couple of questions is, so one of them being an individual voter who is eligible to vote on the measure, does the city check that the individual voters who submit ballot arguments are registered to vote? are registered to vote within the city of Sonoma? And I believe that the county does, I want to check that the city does that as well. Then also one is, a bona fide association of citizens may submit ballot arguments. What criteria are used to determine a bona fide association of citizens? And one other, and that has to do with, let's see, Councilmember Edwards did disclose that he had circulated the referendum petition in the last meeting. And having done so, does this anyway qualify as a conflict of interest requiring him to recuse himself from any other participation on the leaf blower ballot? So those are, those are my questions there, and one observation, I couldn't make it to the last council meeting because I was down in, my wife and I were down in Ojai. We traveled down 101 and came back on I-5, and there was a letter to the editor that said that, let's see, quote, "Sonoma is an agricultural community," and saying, you know, we shouldn't put, have banned leaf blowers. Well, we went by miles and miles of farms, crops, ranches, orchards, not one leaf blower. Down I-5, down 101, come back I-5. Then I not, I did not see or hear a leaf blower until I got into the town of Ojai. Leaf blowers are an urban and suburban phenomenon, so, you know, this is, in a way, if you decide to take an argument, this is when the argument for banning them is to get back to the agricultural roots of Sonoma, so, thank you very much.
Those questions that were asked of Mr. Iker, we'll go ahead and answer after we finish taking public comment.
Hi, Sarah Ford, East Napa Street, Sonoma. I don't have much to say, except that however it goes, if the council or a subcommittee, most likely if the council decides to write the argument, I think that's great, and if not SNALB, well, formerly known as SNALB, now known as Sonoma Calm, is very happy to help out or write the argument in any way that we, you know, we can, we are happy to help out with that in any way we can, as well as the rebuttal to the argument against. And I had, I did have questions about what, it's kind of a gray area, what is a bona fide organization, and would we even qualify? So, we don't have nonprofit status, we're just very much a grassroots organization of a group of citizens, and I would, you know, maybe that can be answered tonight, would we qualify as a bona fide organization to write an argument and a rebuttal to the argument against? Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Mary Lee Ebert, 1167 Neal Court, I just, my question to city staff is, how does the city clerk decide which of the arguments gets on the ballot? I mean, could somebody like Jerry Marino, who, well, I guess he couldn't because he's not a citizen of Sonoma, but, a resident of Sonoma, but could somebody like him write a valid argument and it be chosen? That's just the question I have, is who, how is the decision made? And again, we'd all like to help out.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to voice public comment?
Cecilia Ponison, Sonoma, California. I too would like to help shape the argument for. For me, it's always been a health issue. I think that's very important, and I just wanted to mention, I cannot remember in the 20 years that I've lived here now, seeing so many moms with their babies in strollers walking through our neighborhood. And if I'm fighting for anyone, it's for those babies, when their moms are pushing them through the neighborhood, they can't always be walking their little ones and their infants from 8:00 AM to 9:00 AM. Babies don't work on a schedule like that, so let's protect them. I would like to be a part of writing the pro argument because they matter to me. This is, these are our new citizens, these are our new families that are moving into this town, they're going to be the future of this town. We have to provide for their health and well-being, and that's the focus of my whole reason for coming to all these meetings and wishing and hoping that we had a united council. But in that we don't, in that three of you have stepped up with all kinds of opposition and have taken the step to protect the children of this town, I would hope that you know by now our sincerity in really protecting the health of everybody, but especially those kids. And anytime, feel free to drive through the neighborhoods and see, it's so wonderful to see how many kids have now come in to our town, and I'm quite happy about that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, seeing as no one else is here to participate in public comment, I will go ahead and close the public comments section, and then maybe have some of our responses for those questions. So, not quite sure whether it's city attorney or city clerk that will answer that. City attorney?
I think Gay would be the best one to answer the question as to whether or not those who submit arguments on the basis of being a qualified voter, in fact, are checked out to see whether that they are in fact eligible to vote in the city. Gay, do you do that?
If I had the elections code right here in front of me to read from, I would respond. However, I am reluctant to provide any response right now without being able to refer directly to the code. It's spelled out in the elections code, I have, there are the directions. I have been in this position once before, in fact, it was regarding the Measure J, when I had competing arguments submitted to me, and I used the code as my guide and made a decision. That was, that worked out okay.
Gay, one of the, one of, the elections code does lay out the prioritization and guides you, and actually directs you as to which one to pick, if there are competing arguments on one side or the other. One of the, one class of persons who can submit an argument are those who are eligible to vote, so a single voter could in fact submit to you an argument. The question posed, though, was whether or not you verify whether that person is in fact eligible to vote in the city. In the past, have you ever received an argument from a single voter, or maybe two voters, who claimed they were voters and eligible to vote? Did you, did you take those steps to verify whether or not they were voters eligible to vote?
Yes, I do, and I have the list of registered voters on a disc in my office, so that I will, I can check anyone who comes in.
Great. Another question was, how does the clerk pick which argument to select if there are competing arguments on one side or the other? And as I mentioned before, the elections code actually specifies the order. Number one priority, if there are multiple arguments, and if the council has submitted an argument, that gets priority, and that argument appears. If the council declines to submit an argument, then an argument submitted by a bona fide association has second priority, and that argument would be the one then included in the pamphlet. If no council argument is submitted, if no bona fide association argument is submitted, but an individual voter submits an argument, then that is the argument that is included in the pamphlet. How do you determine whether or not an association is a bona fide association for these purposes? Luckily, or unluckily, there are no criteria. So it's a bit subjective. On its surface, though, it would appear to me that SNALB, now renamed itself, would likely qualify as a bona fide association. It's been well-known, it's been active, its leaders are identifiable, I suspect it would qualify. I think that's all the questions that were asked.
We had one more, and that was?
Oh, the conflict of interest. Yeah, there's no conflict of interest because of a member of the council circulating the referendum petition. First of all, there's no economic conflict at all here. Number two, when you're dealing with a purely policy matter, a legislative matter such as this, the council members can be biased as much as they want. That's the point of being a political official and being political. You have philosophies and political positions you bring to the, to the dais with you, and you're entitled to express those in a policy-legislative context. So there's no conflict.
All right. Well, one, one more thing. So I just wanted to satisfy Mr. Iker that his questions were answered. Ms. Ebert, Mrs. Ebert, your questions were answered, all right? Sarah Ford, your questions were answered, okay? And I'm not sure, Cecilia, if you had questions or not, but thank you for your comments. All right, now, we'll go ahead and ask your questions.
So I have a question, I believe I have the answer. Oh, sorry, it was requested in, in an article, the letters to the editor, that we know, we do not talk, we can't speak to anybody about this ballot measure, and obviously, it's our right to talk to anybody we want, is that correct, in public?
You, you can speak to any member of the public on this ballot measure, as well as any ballot measure, provided you do not hold yourself out as representing the views of the council.
It would be one person.
One person.
Right.
And I think it's also advisable not to be speaking as a council member, even if you say you're just speaking as a single council member, because the law prohibits the utilization of public funds in support of or campaigning against any particular measure. So you need to distance yourself from your position when you in fact take positions on ballot measures.
All right, thank you, I, I thought, I agree with that.
Yes, Councilmember Hundley?
I have a related question, if that's the case, then, I mean, with the pro argument, the mayor could write the argument, sign her name on it, or a subcommittee could write the argument, sign a name on it, isn't that exactly advocating for something?
Absolutely, that's one of the exceptions. Yeah, that's not, there's, there's no exception for the staff and using public resources to help you write that opinion, but the law clearly allows council members and the mayor or the councils as a whole to spend public time and money writing an argument in favor or against a ballot measure. And it's clear, that's, that's advocacy, that's argument.
Thank you.
Well, it sounds like we have our lives cut out for us, all right? We're either Joe Q. resident, or we're our titles, depending upon what we're speaking from. So, to move this item along, I believe if we have no further discussion, I'm looking for some action. So where do we want to go? Councilmember Edwards?
So in regard with what Jeff said, back in 99, we formed the Hillside Preservation Alliance, which was just a group of people, and we went out and raised money, we did all of our political work, followed all the rules with the FPPC, et cetera, et cetera, but we weren't a nonprofit, we weren't anything else, and I, I would highly recommend that the, the group that has come over and over and over, I think, totally identifiable as a group, should be writing the argument, and I think as a council member, I plan to stay out of it. And I just think it's something that the citizens who want this should be bringing it forward for the arguments.
Councilmember Hundley?
I also would, I also think that the council should elect to not write a pro argument and leave it to the community to provide their own.
Okay. Either one, chime in.
And I don't have any opinions at this time, you know, I would certainly be willing to sit on a subcommittee, as we've done with the other ballot measure, or have, you know, one of the groups supporting this ballot measure. I don't have, I don't have a druther at this point.
Councilmember Cook?
Yeah, I guess I do have another question. If we did pick the mayor to do the argument, then she would be, in this case, responsible for picking the bona fide association to help her instead of the city clerk? Is that's really the only difference between the mayor and/or the council not electing to, to make an argument tonight?
If the, if the majority of the council decides that the mayor was going to write the argument, she can choose anybody she wants to help her write it. It doesn't have to be an association, it could be her husband, it could be her aunt from Minnesota, it doesn't matter.
But, but she wouldn't have to put her, that wouldn't be forcing her to put her name on it?
That's true, too, she wouldn't have to sign it. She would be given the power to find the signatories to an argument that she wrote. And that might be difficult, I don't know, I would suspect that if she writes an argument, she'd want to sign it, so she could have a stake in, in the argument that would convince other people to sign with her, but I, that's just speculation on my part. When you, in the last resolution you adopted, not only did you select a subcommittee to write the article, the argument rather, but you gave the subcommittee the power to pick the five persons to sign it. And that would be a similar thing that you should do here, if you wish to have one or two of the councils writing the argument on behalf of the council, you should give that same person or persons the authority to select the folks who are going to sign it. But again, using the association to help write the argument, certainly she could do that if she wishes, but the discussion we were having before, and what the other two council members are suggesting be done, is for the council to write no argument, leaving it to whomever to submit an argument in favor of or against this measure, and then the clerk, pursuant to the elections code, would select which argument goes on the ballot.
And, and remember, if I, if I could just clarify, Madeline, before your question, again, any one of us could sign that argument as a resident, correct?
Certainly, I think you could probably sign it, I wonder if you could sign it as a council member? I don't know about that, I have to take a look to see whether that'd be possible.
But certainly you could sign it as a resident.
Oh, certainly, that's absolutely true.
Madeline?
And my question, you said five, we decided on five, but it's up to five?
Up to five.
Okay.
Councilmember Cook?
Yeah, I'd like to hear the mayor comment on this. I could go either way with the council not making an argument. I would like to see this, you know, go to a bona fide association. I don't want to put the city clerk in a position that she shouldn't have to be in, if it was just easy to have the mayor be in control of that process. So, maestro poll vote would, I could go either way.
That's how I feel, which is no decision at all.
Geez, guys, all right? It would, to me, as far as I'm concerned, you know, I might be signing an argument if you decided no argument, and say that I was going to go ahead and support whatever group is doing this, because there might be outreach and contact as far as that's concerned. I could be the committee that we just did the last time with another council member, which would go ahead and just organize whatever the argument is, didn't necessarily have to sign it. Or I could be the mayor signing the argument. So, you know, it's a, it's a tough seat, you made me mayor this year, and certainly, I will accept whatever responsibility you want to put on me at this point. But frankly, you know, part of what I see here is that I think we have all been out in public comment many times during this particular issue. I have been speaking for seven and a half years on this issue. So my question is, as far as an argument is concerned, do you want to be hearing from other people other than us as to what that argument might be? I, I just want to see that everyone is fairly represented. So I am telling you, I am, I am willing to serve, but I think the decision really has to come from the council.
Well, I am willing to serve on a subcommittee as well, and, and I think it doesn't preclude us from having people work with the group, is that what I understand? As long as we're not here at City Hall or, you know, using citizens' money on that. Okay, thank you.
All right, so I'm still looking for action. Still looking.
So you, you just stated that you've been working on this for seven and a half years?
Correct.
As the organizer of banning leaf blowers, or as?
In support of this particular measure for seven and a half years, yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
And, and when I say that I'm in support of this, the fact is, is that I wanted council to make a decision and an ordinance for this. By that, I have been through many discussions, both pro and con, on this. So, I just want to say that there is a lot of testimony that I have heard in this particular respect. And maybe the public wants to hear from someone else, and that's why I mention that. Yes?
Well, I'd like to go ahead and just make a motion that the city council approve a council subcommittee, being Councilmember Aggermonte and Mayor Gallion, to provide assistance in the written argument for this city measure.
And by that, you mean to write an argument on behalf of the council in support of the leaf blower ordinance, and to have the authority to select those who might sign that, or that argument, up to five people? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
That's similar to what we just did in the last action.
Correct.
Yes. Okay, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, let's go for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Edwards?
No.
Councilmember Hundley?
Aye.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Councilmember Aggermonte?
Aye.
Mayor Gallion?
Aye.
All right, so that goes ahead and summarizes that we have a committee of Mayor Protem Aggermonte and myself, that will be doing the argument for the leaf blower ballot item. And it's a, it's a vote of four to one. And I think we need to move on to our next item. So, let's see, we have a regular calendar, city council is successor agency, I see nothing else on that. Let's go to council members' reports and comments. Yes, Councilmember Cook?
Well, I'd like to start out by, I'm a director of Sonoma Clean Power, thank you to my colleagues on the council. We have a meeting tomorrow, and there is talk about getting Mendocino County possibly to look at joining in to Sonoma Clean Power. There's, most of it's still talk, I just wanted my colleagues on the council to know that if they have any questions, this is going to be vetted, a vetted process. And I would not want to do any vote, you know, based on, without having my council, or having this council in agreeance with, with the vote is. So, I might be, I might be talking about this at our next meeting in July 18th. So, if you have any questions about Sonoma Clean Power, please feel free to, you know, to talk. Thanks.
Yes, Councilmember Edwards?
So, I met recently again with Sonoma Overnight Shelter, just keeping on track with what we discussed our last couple of meetings. So, I'll be bringing back, probably in our mid-August meeting, some ideas and thoughts and updates on what they're doing. Okay? Thank you.
Councilmember, I mean, Mayor Protem Aggermonte.
Did you, David, did you, you want to say? Well, I'd like to really thank a lot of people for coming out for the firefighters, firefighter association. On July 5th, the, the day after the fireworks, I spoke with Patty Oldriscoll, Scout Troop 222, PAC 16 came out, Boy Scouts with Cindy Kenton. I also met Darcy McNary from the Sonoma Girl Scouts. Hannah Boy Center was not able to help this year. The Girl Scout Service Group 103 was there, Thomas McKean. And I am now a pro at cleaning up that field. And I have to say in all honesty, we started at seven, okay with donuts and coffee, but we were, we were out of there by 8:30, and it was absolut, it really wasn't that bad to clean up. And so, I'd just like to thank everyone who responded to whatever way I communicated this, and I'm just really appreciative of the young people that came out. Thank you.
Councilmember Hundley?
I had a few meetings, one was with the Sonoma Valley Citizens Advisory Commission. We did the design review for the restaurant that's going to go into Uncle Patty's, and they brought in a little mock-up of it, and it looks like it's going to be beautiful, and everyone was excited because it has nine parking spaces. I also met with the Sonoma Valley Economic Vitality Partnership, and there's a lot of things always happening with them, but we are re, reviewing the forgivable loan programs, and there's going to be a new program going forward that might be more targeted towards certain kinds of programs or industries that we want to encourage. And related to that, we reviewed the numbers of, you know, the different kinds of businesses in the city and the diversity that we have. And because of the industries that we do have, we're actually very vulnerable to any kind of state and national economic fluctuations. So, I just want everyone to not take our, our stable budgets and our good economy for granted, because we, we depend a lot on, you know, people coming and spending their extra money here. So, in the next few years, you know, we might have to pare down and also think about ways to make ourselves a little more stable.
That's great. I've been traveling to and from most of this week. I just wanted to say that I was able to go to the open house for the Community Action Partnership, learned a lot about their program, their satellite in Healdsburg, as well as just their organization at Stony Point Circle. I would certainly encourage any council member to go up there and find out the programs that are, that are offered. And there could be outreach here in the valley as well. One of the things I found incredibly moving was to see the students who did not graduate or left school early. Mainly, a lot of them had, you know, were starting families, or, you know, they were caught up in other, other things in their lives, a lot of it is drugs, you know, other, other type of crime, you know, theft, anything like this. Or basically, their households just broke apart, and they had no place to go. And this is an exceptional program from 16 to, I think it's one month before year 2026, that you can actually go there and enroll, and, you know, you're making a contract and a commitment, but you can graduate with a, an actual diploma through the John Muir Charter School. And they hold classes, and if you have families, they actually have daycare for the children that you have. And many of the other programs that are going there, I talked to two students, I was particularly interested in foster youth and how at 18, they're more or less just thrown out on their own, and that's a hard transition for them. Especially if they want to go ahead and pursue college with little or no funding options available to them. So, I talked to two students who actually had been in the program in that particular capacity, one of which will be graduating from Sonoma State next year and is totally turning her entire life around, and will go into being, you know, someone who's like a counselor, you know, and giving back in the way that she felt was given to her. So, I just want to say it was great. They also have two houses here that they do on part of their financial package. And one is called the Sloan House, it's very similar to our Haven. And the other one is called Harold's Home. So, I've made appointments to actually go and visit. Madeline and I will be on a field trip, doing that as well, just in looking at housing alternatives. So, it was very informative, actually had an hour meeting with candidate Carter, who is running for the first district's Sonoma County Office of Education seat, talking about his development, especially in this youth program from 2012 that was adopted, and he's actually running that program. I just thought it was incredible that he was able to go ahead and take this and move it into a very viable option. So, it's no longer a pilot, and something that I see we might, we might need. I just wanted to thank the paper for putting together the Sonoma County Civil Grand Jury segment that they put in it. This is very interesting and talks about, you know, quite a few things that affect us on a county basis. They do go ahead and, and actually had a study out, which was the spotlight on affordable housing. I think it's important for people to read this and to actually look at the findings for what they came up with on a countywide basis. The last thing is in transportation, there is a meeting that will be happening on July 13th to learn about the proposed improvements of the State Route 116-121 intersection. This will be at the Finnish American Home Association on 197 West Verona Avenue, and it takes place from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. So, if you want to know about the proposed roundabout, this is where you get your information. Attended the Sweet Scoops ribbon cutting this morning, one of those tough jobs, and somebody's got to do it, right? But it was wonderful to see them in their first, first year anniversary, it's their birthday party, and so, if there's still time after this council meeting, there could be a tiny cone waiting for you. So, I would check in with them. I loved the, the Sonoma Volunteer Firefighters Association and what they did this year. This year is a celebrating success of an organization that, you know, not only went through our community grant program, and I can't tell you how many firemen just came up to me and, and volunteers, and just saying how thankful they were to the citizens here in Sonoma. I think they made an upwards of about $7,000 in just collecting, you know, for donations just on 4th of July. I don't want to ruin anyone's byline, so just pretend you didn't hear it. But I just want to say how successful this was, and how generous the people here in Sonoma are, so. And they fought very hard to keep it safe and sane for 4th of July, I think they accomplished their goal. And the parade was wonderful, kudos to the community center for what we might call a transition year for them, and where things will go for the future, we're not quite sure at this point, but I just wanted to say thank you for their years of service. And last, I will have office hours on Wednesdays, starting next week at 11:00 a.m. Councilmember Cook has shifted his hours, and when are you, say your hours?
Every Wednesday at 1:00 now.
Just so you're not thinking you're coming to David, you're actually seeing me, all right? So, and I'll be doing this throughout the summer and fall. So, 11:00 Wednesday mornings is when I'm available. All right, and I can get back to my agenda again? If there are no further comments, then, here we go. I think it's city manager and announcements, no announcements? Then we would get comments from the public. Anyone wishing to speak from the public?
Hi, I'm Lynn Clary on Rosalie Drive, and I've been down to the Plaza the last two days around lunch, and both times, I've had to speak to children that were chasing the ducks. There's a mother duck with a brood of about six juveniles that likes to lay right by the bench, I guess on the west side. And I, people have brought this up before, and my sister tells me that there used to be signage down there, telling people to not chase the ducks, you know, please leave them alone. And I think, you know, with all the budgets, money from Measure J, can we get a few dollars for some signs to hopefully protect the ducks again? I mean, I was never really a duck fan, but I, I see them being tortured so bad, and I'm like, oh, wow, I never noticed you before until you were in pain. But anyway, hopefully, you can all help do a little bit and make the park a little nicer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, yes, just one second, Cecilia.
I, just in response to that, I'd just like to make you aware that Public Works is taking the signage issue with regards to placing any kind of signage regarding ducks to the CSCC for their feedback.
Thank you, so the signs are in progress. Thank you very much.
My comments also about signage, and it's about trucks. So many of the service trucks in town still don't have signs. There are various reasons for signage on trucks. One is a positive one, you may want to hire one of those fellows, and now you know how to find them. It's very easy to walk by, see a truck, see the job they're doing, you like the job they're doing, you take a picture of their sign, and you have all their information without having to disturb them while they're working for someone else, on someone else's clock. So, the trucks that are not showing signs, is it true, there's kind of a rumor that this signage rule is going to go away? And I think it's important to keep it. I think we should know who's in our neighborhoods, I think we should know the services they offer, and I think we should know if they're responsible for, it's happened, they blow things and leave them in the gutters. I've heard from this gentleman about the water, that it's very important not the leaves piled in the gutters. I know I've gone and cleaned up after them when the rain is coming, because our neighborhood is below sea level, so we can't have our takeaway pipes back up. It's, it's happened before, and it's a really miserable experience. So, please, if this is something that you could discuss at another time, please keep the signage rule for all trucks that work in Sonoma. Thank you.
I would just like to thank all of you guys for your time, I'm really glad that we're going to finally put this to rest. And I just wanted to tell you what Sarah and I did yesterday, and it's because a few weeks back, a couple of us witnessed a man in a wheelchair that had an oxygen tank on him try to go up the ramp to Dutch Brothers, and a leaf blower was out there, and he had it going at full throttle and assaulted this poor gentleman. And so, we thought, you know, let's not wait till November. So, Sarah and I packed up some packages yesterday, we walked down Broadway, we went down Napa Street, and every business that we went in, and we explained why we were doing it, we just asked if they would have a voluntary ban, or just agreed to not use leaf blowers, gas leaf blowers, to clean their properties. 100% success rate. And I'm just going to read from you a couple of the comments of the different businesses. Al Manero at Sonoma Market, he says, oh, this is just great, and it's in line with our new green program. MacArthur Place, she said, why would we want to aggravate our guests? Unified School District said, well, we're doing it for the safety of the children, our staff, and our workers. Fine Line said, it's just good for business, and I love this last one. Williams Sonoma, they said, we do it, we sweep the sidewalks because Chuck swept the sidewalks. So, I like that. I have a couple of questions, I don't know if it's too late, but on the ballot language, does it have to read "ban," or can you put the word prohibit? Because, you know, we've all agreed that nobody likes to have anything banned, and I don't know if we can switch out the word prohibit for ban. It has to be the way that it's worded now? Okay, all right, well, we'll just leave it the way, and then, and then, will you guys be reviewing the ballot language then at the next meeting? Is that when that takes place?
Would that be the August 15th meeting?
That the 15th or 12th, something like that.
That would be a report back as well, if we wanted to do it?
It's a report back, but it will already have been filed, because it's after the deadline.
Correct.
And then, does the opposition, I'm assuming they get to write an argument for their views on the ban, do we get to see that before election, and do they get to see our argument?
I would have to defer to--
Yes, they do, and you're then entitled to write a rebuttal. And I'm assuming that, well, we didn't, the council didn't talk about whether the subcommittees would be authorized to write a rebuttal, we didn't address that issue. The assumption was that they would be also entitled to write a rebuttal.
Okay.
Does it say ban and rebuttal, rebuttal, too? Okay. It included rebuttal, that's, so the, both sides have a chance to rebut the arguments.
Great, okay, all right, so, you know, you've got a lot of willing participants to give you a hand.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
All right, is there anyone else wishing to speak on public comment?
We want you to go out and get an ice cream cone.
All right, I'm closing public comment, I've got pressure from the audience. And we'll go ahead, and if there's no further information, let's go ahead and adjourn this meeting. Thank you. See you on the 18th.